No.
Well, can I record again?
Nope. Why? Because it's our policy not to record for number 70.
But I also told you that you are violating that policy every meeting. Because that policy said you were going to post them on the Ubid website.
We agree.
No, those are links.
We are posting them.
A link can be posted anywhere. Those are links. It's not hosted. You're not hosting them. You're just, you put them on YouTube. And the reason it was brought up was because it was supposed to be for copyright reasons. That was the reasoning behind that bylaw. So that they, the Ubid could control the video. But the minute you put it on YouTube, to host it on YouTube, you are giving up any copyright. So you're not abiding by your own bylaw. This is a public meeting. I should be allowed to video record it because you're not video recording it.
Question.
According to our bylaw 70, and unless we have further advice from the lawyer or something, I'm not going to allow it today. And pardon me, yes. Go ahead, recognize.
This is a public meeting and all public meetings, according to our policy, are to be video recorded.
Okay.
You're not abiding by your own bylaw again today.
I'm wondering why is this one not being recorded? Because according to our bylaw, all videos, by us, not by... Why is Union Bay not recording this? This is a public meeting and all public meetings, according to our meeting procedures bylaw, are to be video recorded and then that video recording posted on for the public.
Wait till they say that in their bylaws.
In our meeting bylaws.
Okay, I went through the whole thing yesterday in detail. I did not see anything of that nature.
There's a whole section on video recording. And that is the...
Pinned between page, around page eight, I believe.
Bylaw 270, the number.
It's bylaw 2, yeah, it's on meeting procedures bylaw. I'm just, again, confused as to why you are choosing to record some. At the last court, at the last committee of the whole meeting, the recording thing was forgotten. Understandable. But this is a new meeting and there's still no recording device. So what you need to find is the section on video recording, which was an addendum to the bylaw, which...
I have 270 here.
Well, it's actually a different number because it's an addendum to the bylaw.
270 was the addendum.
Oh, I see.
263 is the bylaw.
Sorry, thank you very much. So, all meetings are to be recorded by Union Bay and posted in a timely manner.
When I brought this up at a meeting, trustee Bennett said, "Well, it didn't turn out the way they wanted."
Yes, that's true because...
Mr. Chair, we will start the meeting. Let me start because I'll have to leave.
Yeah, basically, until I get further advice on this...
But what does the bylaw say?
Can you make a ruling?
Public meetings, so basically this is committee of the whole meeting.
This is a public meeting.
And posted on the website, but we do our own recording. So I guess what we'll have to do, we'll have to look at it, but right now, I'm not prepared to go ahead with anyone video-taking this meeting.
No, but I'm not asking anyone. Union Bay is the, we have our own recording material. We have our own recorder.
Call the office.
We have our own video recorder.
Yeah, and we also have an operator that comes and operates it, and then I hear it right now.
Yeah, because you can't have somebody, one of your own people can't turn it on and off. That's the only reason.
So again, why wasn't that clear?
That's what happened.
If literally someone can't turn it on or off, this is not okay. We've been, we're under scrutiny from the ministry already. We're not doing things properly. And this is not okay. We have a bylaw, we're supposed to follow it, that was made very clear in our training from the parliotarian.
Okay. So we do not, so we have a choice. They say it would be public by the Union Bay Improvement District. We do not have anybody here to do it, so we have a choice. We either have the meeting without it, or we don't have the meeting.
Well, no, we need to go ahead with the meeting in time of pressing. Obviously, can we make some kind of commitment that we will be, that we will follow the procedure bylaw from this point forward? Whether it's a Cal meeting, I even said that, Paul, at the last Cal meeting.
I don't remember that.
I said, "Where is his recording staff?"
I answered to you, I do not remember that. So the question is, if the recording is not here, we will look into it? We will get the answers.
What answers needed? It's clear that we're meant to be recording it. I'm not sure what answer you're looking for. Where is it unclear?
Well, I always get them mixed up. I'm trying to figure out here and because a public meeting is based with the Cal meeting, it's a public meeting, but it's not like the board meeting.
It is the same as...
Board of order, let one person speak.
Yeah, anyway, I told you my answer, that this meeting will not, will currently be recorded by our person. And he is not here, so basically, we either go ahead with the meeting or we cancel it. Which would you prefer?
I would like to know what the future holds. Because I don't want to go through this.
And I advise that I will look into it and get clarification on this public meeting.
From whom will you look into it?
I will, that's, I have to ask some people and find out. It will be someone outside who would be an expert in this area. So maybe I'll go back to our consultants?
Yes.
And ask them again, ask to their, and we'll keep, yeah.
So I am requesting as a trustee, an answer to this question because I do not want to go through this again. Because we're having regular meeting at the whole, public meetings.
Okay.
And it's going to come up every single time.
Okay, I will...
You will give an answer?
I will find an answer for you.
Thank you.
And I will get a clarification on this policy.
Thank you.
And we'll go from there. So the meeting, as you said, welcome. This is a committee of the whole meeting. And as part of the committee of the whole meeting, it is the committee. You, the audience, are allowed to be here, or the taxpayers of Union Bay, welcome. Basically, you have no input in the meeting. You are here, you do not, there will be no question period at the end. And that is available at the public meeting that we'll have next Saturday. This is basically a working committee for the trustees. And welcome. It is, whatever time it is, 2:05, and I call the meeting to order. And the next point is the adoption of the agenda. Before we go too far, we, there's number five on the agenda. It's basically, should be in camera, not closed meeting. And...
Actually, that's not true. You're saying it is listening.
Well, no, okay. Sit here with me. I just took a pause for a second. And I believe that there's, basically, we can move, I believe we can move some of those items up to the open topics, the reports. They're not, they shouldn't be in the closed portion.
Thank you.
So the proof officer will be, will be a regular discussion. The fire chief and the contract will be part of the encamer.
No, actually, point of order.
Did you not hear me?
Point of order, sir.
Yes.
Point of order, I have the rules for regulations right here. Right here, I asked you to produce these, Chair Healy, this is a serious point. Oh, good. Awesome. And you'll see in there, under personnel information, you will see, it states clearly that "The disclosure of personal information is not an unreasonable invasion of a third party's personal privacy if the information is about the third party's position, functions, or remuneration as an officer, employee, or member of public audit." That applies to the approval of the fire chief and deputy fire chief contracts. It also applies to the capital expenditure costs. Because that's factual information, it's public information. It also includes the RBC loan discussion.
Yep, and we're going to move all those up. But as be, my knowledge is that the in-camera is for labor, land, litigation. And this is labor.
Labor, you're right, Chair Healy. You're still on the point of order, so I appreciate you taking my concerns seriously. The broad headings are, you're correct, labor, land, and litigation. Labor refers specifically to personnel, staff, where it involves private information, such as a medical leave, disciplinary action. It does not involve straight contractual, every one of the employees of Union Bay, their salary, their contract is public information. That's where this falls in.
And it will be public information once we approve the contract. So we will approve the contracts, then it will become public information.
Right, but you understand, it does not necessarily need to be in the in-camera portion because there is no personal information being discussed other than what we are obligated by the Afika to report.
As far as I know, and for today, I will leave that in camera. Anything else will come out of camera.
I understand. And again, when you speak about the other question, could you specifically and use that as an example? Ask about this one for future, Paul, please. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your ruling based on facts. Thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're on to the, so basically, we have the Island Timber response from the ministry, the FUPA, capital expenditures, RBC, and the review of 1B01. Is there any other business that we will be adding to our agenda? Would we like?
We haven't adopted the minutes yet. We're a couple of minutes.
We will, we will, we'll have that next.
No, that's company forwarding.
When you're asking for additions to the agenda, do you mean for this agenda? You're not collecting additions for like next week's meeting?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the minutes of the last meeting, which was held in August 8, do you, okay, for the agendas, so do I have, so the agenda as set, do I have someone to...
I shall move.
Move it, okay.
What are we moving?
The agenda.
The agenda, okay. I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing, are we moving the minutes?
We're moving the agenda. Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay. Now we will move to the approval of the minutes. Do we have someone to...
There's a slight correction. I would move to, I move to...
Now, as per our training, with this, is a correction going to change anything in there?
No, other than the way it's presented, the first portion is all public. It says confidential all over it, but it's not. The first portion of the meeting, all of items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, right down to motion to go into camera, that's the in-camera portion. The whole front part, items 1, and we did a lot of work that meeting. Items 1 to 9 are public.
Okay.
So the rest, when we lay in camera, those are in camera minutes. So when this is put, when we approve these, and I'm not disputing approval of this, we have to post the public one, the public portion immediately, right?
Okay.
And the in-camera portion is separately posted under in-camera minutes.
And once they're approved, then become...
Well, you see, the problem is the heading is confidential minutes, but that's not true.
Okay. So can we have a motion to approve the minutes? And we will delete the heading confidential minutes? So done? Do we have a second? Okay. All in favor? Okay, there you go. Still need confidential minutes. Done.
And post, and post the public part. Because what would normally happen, the way it is written right now, these minutes would never see the light of day, and that's not right.
Well, these minutes have to be reconfirmed at the next public meeting, which is next week.
No, according to way they, way they're done, and again, this is a problem with administration not understanding the difference between in-camera and not. The way it's written right now, this is all, it's even got confidential all over it, all over the part, but it's not confidential. So unless we specify in our motion that the public portion of the minutes will be posted online, it's not going to happen.
Okay.
So can we add that to the approval of the minutes?
That's a public portion, you post online?
Yeah.
Okay, we can. So we need some...
So I'll make a new motion?
Sure.
So I move to approve the August 8 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes with the removal of confidential and the posting of the non-confidential portion of the minutes.
Okay, just one second.
Items 1 to 10, 1 to 9, be publicly posted. Can I ask why the administrator is not here? It makes this work extremely difficult for you especially, Paul?
Basically, the administrator is not attending any public meetings. UP staff are not present at today's public meetings. Recent committee of the whole and public meetings have been displayed in unwelcome, unsafe, disrespectful environment for staff. Attendance by UBC staff at committee of the whole and public meetings will resume in a safe, civil, respectful environment for staff, trustees, and landowners has been recorded. Basically, they're not...
Well, it starts right there.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Here's a perfect example of why he isn't here.
Excuse me.
Because we're not controlling...
As I said earlier, there's no comments from the gallery, from the spectators, please.
Is there any warning being issued here? We can't, we just can't keep going on and on and on. There has to be a point where somebody is...
Trustee Bennett is interrupting. I had a question.
Okay, but the landowner did make, and I asked, okay. Please, no more comments from the gallery of any sort. Thank you. No more gallery comments. Okay. And I read the thing, so if you want to make your motion, please.
I move to approve the August 8 Cal Meeting Minutes with the correction of removing confidential from items 1 to 9 and posting those public items online on Ubid's website as per our meeting procedures bylaw.
Okay, do we have a second there? Okay. Just one second. So we move to approve the August 8 Cal Meeting with approving the, with removing the confidential section 1 to 9 and posting the...
Public portion.
Public portion.
On Ubid's website.
On Ubid's website.
As per bylaw.
Okay. As per bylaw. Okay.
There was a second there, we just need to vote.
All in favor? Okay, done.
Thank you. It was actually, all, just to refresh everyone's memory, if I might, Chair Healy. We did a lot of work at that Cal meeting and we made a lot of motions. And what should have happened, according to what we learned in our training, is the Cal meeting is like a rehearsal because none of the motions that we make at this meeting, they have to be remade at the next public meeting. So what was supposed to happen last time, Paul, if you remember, was these motions, we should have had them in our hand and actually formally passed them at the August, but we didn't have them.
No, and that's what we're working on.
I know.
And we will get there.
Yeah, I know we will. But I just want to point out that we covered a lot of work. We did a lot of good work, and it's actually the public that's missing out.
Mr. Chair, discussion.
No, there is no discussion, okay. Okay, we are, so we approved the minutes, and we have the motion on the floor. Okay, done. And basically, we'll head into the reports. So, Island Timberland meeting. We attended the meeting this morning at 9:00 AM till approximately 11:30 with Island Timberland. And maybe what I would do if someone, one of the trustees who attended, would like to give us their overview of what we...
I'll go first.
Thank you.
It was a very conclusive meeting. We learned a lot. We got a concept of the actual oversight in terms of who reviews stuff, their audit process, et cetera. They've identified through their mosaic report the concept of avoiding certain logging areas in terms of the flumeal fan areas, for instance. Identifying areas in terms of wind problems to be untouched or to do selective hand logging upside of it. We've got an idea of the process in terms of how they project it. We've got a timeline in terms of until they build a road, nothing's going to happen. A road gets built a year before, air building a road this year. That means next year they'll be building a road, and then logging will not take place until the fall. So we have an idea of the timeline. There is no area projected in terms of logging at this point, but it has to be determined by their own forestry people. Overall, they're fairly open about their own processes. There are balance. They're certainly not willing to sit down with us at a hall meeting, but they're quite willing, the projection was, if we get a question airdrop, like a question and answer thing from the people of Union Bay, if they have concerns about the watershed, what's going to happen there, what the crashes are, they're quite willing to sit down and present something in terms of answers to our questions, which we can now put out with our, either on the website or landowners' updates or whatever. This is not formalized at this point. It was just a proposal at this stage. We have, that's what we get. So it'll be an information process. There's no clear definitive answers because they haven't identified where they're logging or when they're logging.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Chair.
Yep. Dave?
I'm Dave.
No, sorry, I was watching the trustee who was speaking.
Okay.
So, I have...
Go ahead.
So, previous company were going to, they had a very clear block. It was block four, which is on the steepest slope, that they were going to cut. So it sounds like, from what you said, that's off the table?
It's not that it's off the table. It hasn't been identified as the area they plan on logging. They're still looking at the various areas. They want to commit to small pieces at a time. So they have no identifiable piece that is going to be logged. The problem has been, Mosaic is a holding company that does management work. They're not the owners of the property. So it's an amalgamation of Timber West and Island Timberland that owns the property. Mosaic runs it. It's a management company. So they have to go in, reevaluate, and where they're going to log. So the area of logging has not been identified. And the timeline for logging has not been identified.
Well, I think that's good news, but it sounds like they have something in mind because of proposing building a road. So where are they going to log?
The road proposal is based on when they're going to log and where they're going to log. What they're saying is that we are not building a road until we identify where we are logging.
Oh, okay.
So we build the road first, that'll be year one project, which is next year, if that happens. Then the following year would be the logging.
I guess I'm a little confused. There's already roads in it.
Well, there's lots of roads there.
Yeah, so why...
But roads are created expressly for the purpose of a certain block. The roads are just to get around on. That road might not be used for the logging operation. So they might have to build another road, which would be done before logging starts.
Yeah, I understand. So it just sounds like they've run out of good wood to cut on existing roads.
No, 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 not at all.
Okay, that's how I interpreted. So obviously, I'm wrong. Okay.
They're looking at what is the most profitable area, and also, not just most profitable, what is the most logical area to log on, from their perspective. They're looking at long term.
Okay.
Logging is a farming industry to them.
Yeah.
You own the property, grow trees, when they get big enough, you whack them.
So the committee answered from them about our inability to access the report ourselves as trustees?
The...
The mosaic report?
Is there, is there a problem?
But did we ask why?
Did they, we asked, and they advised us...
It is.
Mr. Chair, I thought we were going to go through and report as to each person that was at the meeting.
True.
And that was the process. I understood that we were taking...
I was asking questions of the first person who recorded.
And unfortunately, I don't think we should have to reiterate the whole meeting for Suzanne. She had an opportunity to attend. It was very educational. It's a key part of our job as trustees.
I, Chair, objection, objection. Chair Healy, I contacted you and said I could not come to this morning meeting.
She didn't provide me that. Okay. Let's, okay.
Okay, so my report.
Trustee Bennett, please.
Actually, I know some of the people that were at the meeting, very experienced people, planning, still agriculture, candidate manager who stayed on. We didn't get a total clarification on the structure of the new company. It was, it's a management restructuring, and it's not a restructuring of the land itself, which I found very interesting. Island Timberlands retains their holdings, Timber West retains their holdings, and it will be managed by Mosaic. So I don't know, like, that does seem confusing to me, but on the other hand, I never did understand where two companies were working side by side with two management structures doing the exact same thing. So, I mean, practically, it makes sense, but, but it does sound like Mosaic. And it's not the Mosaic that we were thinking about. It's actually a newly formed, it's not in any way...
Related.
Related to any of the potash mines or that. It's just a Mosaic forest management company that has no other connection with anything else.
Head for the bank, or...
Yeah, which I thought was kind of interesting. It did sound like they were trying to form the best practices of these systems and information from each company to give them, I think he almost called it like a step up in their directions of what they were doing. And actually, all their systems and that, they were going through them again to update them to any current standards that might not have been included. So I thought that was very good. We talked about, you know, sensitivity of our lake. And just logically, when you stand back and look at it and see the area around it, it's not capable of absorbing any, anything that dramatic changes. So, you know, I think you're on board with that. I was impressed with their practice code and the regulations that they're following. We did discuss the fact that it was, it was only audited by a firm, and I think it was probably 5% or 10% of their cut logs were audited. So again, much different than a tree farm license, but they're running under the same forest practice code. It was, I asked them if they would have hold a public meeting. Because us interpreting their answers to the public is really not what we should be doing. They will not go to a public meeting because of our history of violence at meetings. So, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
That's two.
That's two, yep.
Okay, so what happens at three?
We really have to, if there's three, then we will ask the person to leave, and they don't leave...
I'm still speaking.
I'm making a point of order.
I'm still speaking.
I'm still speaking. Okay. At three, then we'll ask you to leave. Okay? And if you don't, then the meeting will be adjourned.
Okay, so anyway, because I feel that the people of Union Bay actually... actually from talking to these people, I felt very positive about the way they were talking about our, the lake and how they want to protect it as well, you know, and their reputation. So, I thought that was very good. But again, for me to pass that on to people, it's not the same as them coming to a meeting and people seeing that themselves. Unfortunately, we can't do that. So, Hine suggested that we establish some kind of a newsletter or a question and answer thing. And I think that would probably work well. Where the biggest thing we need to do is have information up to people very timely, ahead of time, so that we can, if there are questions about what they're doing, that we can address them. So, and again, I think I asked them directly what had changed in their planning to address the going from three up to five turbidity down to one. So, I think that actually, at that point, I thought a lot of people sat back and kind of maybe were thinking about what the difference is. I don't know if anybody had really thought of it to that point. So, I thought that was a good point in the meeting that they actually didn't come back with some answer that meant nothing. They actually just sat back and were having a pause to see what they should do to react to that. So, anyway, in general, I thought it was a very good meeting. It was two hours long. It was an open discussion. I thought we were well connected with them. It wasn't an animosity in any way, shape or form, but we certainly did let them know that we can't have any problems with turbidity in the lake.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I have to go along with what Rick has to say. Another thing I can add to it is it was very adamant from all of us that went to this meeting that all the people of Union Bay are very concerned about this watershed and that we do not want to see this watershed damaged to the point where it's going to end up costing a whole bunch of money to turn around. For instance, we're putting out a lot of money for this filtration plant and all of a sudden, there's a whole mess of turbidity coming in that normally would never be coming in. Now, all of a sudden, what is that going to do to that filtration plant that we were mandated to put up? And I think that kind of made them stand back and say, you know what? We better comply and do the best possible logging methods we can not to damage that lake in any way. Because that would be the worst PR that they could ever face. So, otherwise, they were very compliant. And my feeling is, Hine's suggestion of a regular newsletter coming from them to the improvement district for the public so that the public can get updates of what is going on back there is probably one of the best things. And they are, they said they're going to sit down and they're going to do that. So that is probably going to help a lot of people and relieve a lot of minds of, these people aren't just coming in and whacking out a bunch of trees and leaving a mess everywhere. That's not the way they operate. And that's about it. I think Rick said a lot towards what was going on. We are working with them and they're working with us. There's a good relationship. We want to keep it that way. And we want that body of water up there, which gives us our potable water to be kept as best as possible. That's, that's it.
Chair? Yep, do you have a question?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
So, based on what the reporting that we've been given on the meeting, which sounds overall quite positive and I'm very encouraged. Though, so my motion is, I move, based on recommendations by trustee Bitten and Vandenberg, who do not want to be responsible for answering technical questions that Union Bay forward written questions, and I have a page of written questions here, which are very technical, they're not technical, but they're black and white. They're only questions that the forestry company, management company should answer. That is a starting point. So my motion is that Union Bay is very excited to work together with Mosaic and would like to submit a list of simple but technical questions to which they can take their time and respond to. And then we can post that information on our newsletter. So we're not translating technical info from a company, right? So we're just, so basically...
Okay, you're making a speech, not a motion.
I made a motion to submit questions to Mosaic.
Okay, let's, let's go back because you're also assuming some negativity because you could not answer the question.
No, I'm sorry.
You did. You did.
What negativity?
Because you said that the other trustee would not answer the question.
No, I think it's hard, no, pop, excuse me.
Please, please make a straightforward motion.
I meant, said no negativity whatsoever. I simply echo trustee Bitten's concern that it's really hard to interpret technical info. So that was all I meant.
Okay, so let's...
They did a very good job. So my motion is to submit a list of questions to Mosaic so they can answer them and then we can post the answers for our landlords. That's my motion. And I have some questions right here as a starting point, which are very sort of basic, broken down to Union Bay concerns, roadwork, watershed, repairing, reforestation, and communication channels.
Those 20 questions?
Yeah. No, there were not 20.
21. Yeah, they will, those questions, I talked to the lady this morning there and they will answer those questions by Pam Jorgensen. And she answered most of them this morning and we will answer the rest of them very quickly here. So by next week, we'll have full answers on those questions.
These ones?
Yep.
Okay. They were already submitted?
They were submitted this morning. I talked to Pam Jorgensen and they will be, they, they will be, yeah, soon as we can get them, there'll be a little bit of touch and go with her, but we will get those questions answered. Soon as possible.
Okay.
Okay?
No need for the motion then?
Yep, no, okay, they, they were, motion done, okay. And we're back on my agenda. Okay. Response to the ministry regarding a government review. So the letter that we posted to the government went onto the website in early August and the response from the ministry went onto our website on September 3rd. And basically, discussion, does anybody want to start a discussion? Or make a motion that we respond to them?
I'll start a discussion. So, I'm kind of disappointed in the letter from the ministry. I don't think it's the ministry's job to tell us what our community wants. We asked them specifically to start a governance study looking at us retaining as unit, looking at a municipality or transitioning to the regional district. They've taken it upon themselves to just say that because of our, I'll read it, I'm sure everybody's read this letter that's here, but, incorporation can be a contentious issue for a community in the best of circumstances. Over the past two years, there's already evidence of significant community discord in Union Bay. Given the governance challenges the board has had and the contentious interactions that they have occurred between the board and the members of the public. In that context, the study votes seen solely on service convergence seems prudent at this point in Union Bay's evolution. As a consolidation of service provision under a single local government provides a solid foundation for further consideration of more significant government change in the future. Well, I don't think that's really up to them to decide that. So, I believe that we should respond to this letter in such a way that we don't accept that. The last time there was a referendum for a municipality here, lost by, I think, seven votes or something. So, you know, I don't think that that shows that there's a dramatic difference in the community. So, other than that, I don't know that the letter really states in, I don't think with the conversion to the regional district that there'd be clarification that there actually has to be a referendum held before that is actually happening. But possibly that would come out of when we understand the process changing over that we would understand that at that point. So, that's my only comments on the letter.
Okay. Any other trustees who'd like to speak on the matter? Trustee Carl, Carl is up.
Yes, my feeling is that the people of Union Bay have a little referendum regarding governance and whichever one they choose, they should have the right to choose one of three or possibly four. It's a case of all of these things should be brought forward for the public to sit back and listen at public meetings, understand, and then they have a clear conscience on which way they want to vote and whichever way the public votes is what we have. I'm democratically feeling, I think it really is a choice of the people of Union Bay as the taxpayers in this community to have the right to make that decision, not another governing body saying, this is what you should do. And that's it. I think everybody in this room and all the rest of the landowners in this community should have the right to make their own mind and their own decision on which way they want to go. And that way, they can see the pitfalls, they can see the good, the bad, and the ugly of each type of governance and they can decide which good, bad, and ugly they want. It's that simple. And that's all I have to say on the matter.
Okay. Trustee Vandenberg?
The letter that got sent out originally to Murray Ednison had a request, remain in improvement district conversion or become a standalone municipality. I thought her letter went out as it should. And I'm sort of disappointed that standalone municipality is not being addressed. I don't believe we have the capability at this point to actually become a municipality, but that's not the point. The point is, you should have a choice. The only other thing that yes could be addressed is that if we're going to proceed on this one, that might require a letter to our Area A Director and want to receive the R D. But I would like to question the Murray Ednison on what does it take to become, or what does it take to get a study done on a standalone municipality basis? I recognize that you don't want to do it because it costs them more money and it's another level of government that you'd rather not deal with. They'd rather do it with one entity than separate entity. But, that's it.
Trustee Kelcher?
I think this letter is crystal clear. And the reason municipality, or which they call here incorporation, is not advised by the ministry at this time is for the very reason that it is a long, long, and they say that right here, it is a long, long process. And what we have right now, and, and, you know, I agree with what has been stated, we are certainly not at the position with our population to sustain being a municipality. So, the overarching, the word that the ministry is using here is prudent. Our job is to be fiscally responsible. We have massive borrowing costs. The only way we can mitigate the massive borrowing costs on $4.2 million, which we're borrowing from a bank, not municipal financing, which we could get, is huge. And for that reason, for prudent, practical, fiscal reasons, the ministry is saying, look, you guys, we recognize you need help with your infrastructure. There's no way you should all be paying it out of 680 pockets. And the best way to do that is to move quickly to the regional district. And of course, there will be a referendum. There is no exclusion of a referendum. This is simply moving forward with our goal of the letter, which was to examine the pros and cons. And for the funding, there's funding for that. And so that's what this letter triggers. There's actually no response required by Union Bay. And she says very clearly here, the correspondence that they are waiting for is from the C V R D, not us. This is a letter of information for us. The next step is C V R Ds. This can be, in order to proceed with planning for a study, remember, this is just a study. This is not a decision to join. It's just a study of the pros and cons. The ministry will need an indication from Area Elect, Electoral Area A Director and the regional district that they're prepared. So that's who this letter is asking to hear from, is the C V R D and the Area A Director, not us. We already made our letter. So it's, it's an F. So I'm sorry, is that not clear here in the letter?
Your interpretation is slightly different than mine, so be it.
So it says, once this correspondence is received from the C V R D, then the ministry will be able to request for financial resources to do the study.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just respond to trustee Kelcher's saying in the letter that it says it's prudent because of financial reasons, that we do not consider the municipality has nothing to do with financial reasons. It says it's because of the contentious issues in the community. So don't, it's nothing to do with financial matters and it's not saying that it's prudent. It's prudent because of this discourse in the community. So that's my clarification. And I want to again say, I would like to have seen in the letter that it actually stated that there'd be a referendum. I'm assuming, as everybody here does, that there is one. But assumptions are sometimes not the best thing to do.
Go ahead.
This letter is simply to get the funding from the ministry to do the study. It's up to us, to them, when we get the results of the study, to then ask the landowners what they think of the results and what they want to do. It's, I would like to add one more thing. It is not due to a mistake that the minister did not say, oh, and yes, by the way, we think you should stay an improvement district. They actually don't even address that because frankly, we have failed as an improvement district. That's the reference to the two years. And these, us three are part of the board that resulted in the failure of proper communication and transparency and accountability to the public. That's why we got this letter. And it's a very powerful letter and it is a condemnation of how Union Bay Improvement District has handled themselves in the past two years. And three of us here have to take responsibility for it.
Okay, so basically, it's got response to the ministry regarding the government's review. It's what the, it's on our agenda. So I guess the question is, is there a response? Or do we let it sit as is or?
My thoughts were still, if we're going to proceed to the letter to Daniel Arberg and to the C V R D, just to confirm that we're in track, we've received the letter and if they have any concerns. That was my only point. We're not asking for permission. I have a different interpretation of the letter than you. Do you have any?
I just, Mr. Chair, I just think that, you know, I think probably what you're asking is whether we respond back to the ministry about the fact of the municipality and, you know...
I've taken off the table now.
Yeah, and I don't know whether, you know, in that study, again, it's not talking about a financial issue. There's lots of municipalities, different levels of municipalities with our type of population. I just don't know... I just don't know if you can really...improvement districts unfortunately don't get grants. They don't get...they do get financing that's equivalent to, as we'll discuss later, but we don't get grants. So, that's the one thing with becoming a municipality where we would be able to access grants, so...
And municipal financing.
Mr. Chair, can you get the order here? So, anyway, I don't know, you know, if the board would like to submit a letter back asking them that we feel that a municipal study is part of this, of what we've asked for, or whether we don't bother with that or not. I totally agree with Heinz. Our community does not have the energy to become a municipality. I find it, you know, I find it sad that we don't, but, you know, maybe at some point we will. And if we don't understand what is available, I don't know.
So, Trustee Danenburgh, do you want to make a motion that we...or will Trustee just go ahead and write a letter to the area aid trustee and Russell Dyson confirming that they're on side with the...basically, in order to proceed with planning for a study, ministry will indicate that the electoral area director and the Comox Regional District Board are prepared to take the leadership role. So, I guess basically, we need to find out from them, or the government will find out. I guess we can ask them if they're responsive, if they're...
The government of British Columbia is the one who will...
That's what this letter is.
That's the one who will turn around and do the funds.
Yeah, but, yeah, but they have to reply and say, yes, they're going to, that they're interested.
I think they got a copy of this letter.
They do, right.
So, it's up to them to respond, I believe.
Okay. Okay, so that is...
Balls in their court.
There's no protection required in that part at this time. Basically, I think we're...I'm just going to hop around a little bit here because the RBC loan came up in that last discussion, and I think it's just a good time just to move into that.
So, we're going to item six now?
Item six, yes. It just follows the orders of what's in. Okay, so, Trustee Bitten, you added that to the...you asked that we talk about this?
Yeah. So, I guess good news in the fact that, I'll have to get up to speed here, you've actually...I think our bylaw was stating that we were at a...was, our bylaw is 3.38.
3.38, yeah.
And you were thinking that we could be able to get a 2.88 or whatever, depending on 2.88 or 2.58 range.
Yeah.
So...
What are you talking about?
Okay, maybe I'll just have...in August, I sent out a memo to all the trustees and just talking about, I talked to the Royal Bank Loans Officer. My, for those who don't know, my background is in finance and many years involved in it. So, I talked to the loans people at the Royal Bank, and basically, what they have done is totally that the rate on the...the rate that we have on the bylaw is not the actual rate that we'll be receiving. It's like, it's like, what we have is like a construction loan. We are paying interest at a rate of prime while the construction is happening.
What is that rate, please?
It's 3.95%, which is prime today, and it's prime even, not plus, minus, or anything else. And when the, and when the, when we fully fund it, the project, come hopefully next April, or May, whatever the case may be, then we will have a choice to look at it and say, "What term do we want to pick?" When I questioned the Royal Bank person, he mentioned that we could take, if we locked in today, and what's happened between March and September, the bond rate, the cost of money gets dropped. So, our rate today, we took a five-year today, and it'd be like 2.88%, which is a drop of roughly 50 basis points, which would save the taxpayers of Union Bay about $1,000 a month. So, it's quite a sizable drop. And rates are holding fairly steady right now. So, basically, what, I'll just letting people know that we have a choice of taking a term from one year to five years, or take a variable rate at the time. And generally, what my thinking is, is once we get to that point, we will, come March or so, we'll sit down and look at the rates. The one thing he did tell me that's quite important is that they consider improvement districts the same as they would consider a municipality. So, if the Royal Bank, if Courtney or Comox went to the Royal Bank and asked for a loan, they would get the same rate as we would get the same rate steady. But he confirmed that that was the rate. That was a very advantageous rate.
I haven't finished, Mr. Chair. You go to the floor.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have a question for the section that Paul just talked about.
Wait, hold on your question.
He was addressing adding to...
We'll come back to it.
Yeah, we'll get back to you. I just, first off, I did want to get clarification and thank you again, Paul. I appreciate the fact that you definitely have the background in the finance end of it, and I think it's great that you can, you know, interpret it all for the rest of us. I did want to make sure that everybody understood very clearly that we are getting the same interest rate as a municipality would. So, that's one point that I want to make. Secondly, the other thing I want to talk about, or maybe understand, is if we can get a lower rate, if we could drop our amortization back from the 25 years, back to 22 years or 21 years or whatever, I don't know if that's a possibility, but... And then the third thing I wondered about was, you know, your reference, maybe going for a one-year or something because of the conversion, but from our discussions at the regional district, it was clear that they could take over, if we did join the regional district, they could take over our loan at some time, and I think we would be far better off to get the longest term we can at the best rate. I don't think that we should let conversion decide, you know, whether, you know, the loan is still going to be there and taken over by somebody else, so I think the best thing is to look at the longest term at the lowest rate we can. So, those are my points.
Trustee Kelcher?
Thank you. First of all, as was explained to us at the regional district meeting, regional districts and municipalities get favorable rates for municipal finance, from the Municipal Finance Authority. It's not a bank. It's separate from a bank. So, yes, of course, it's true. If a municipality, and why would they, makes no sense, but if a municipality went to the Royal Bank, yes, Royal Bank would give the same rate that they're giving the Improvement District. But a municipality doesn't do that because they don't need to, because they can go to a separate bank called Municipal Finance Authority and acquire loans at 2% below prime. And before we make any decision one way or the other, that was what was told to us by the CVRD. She did qualify that statement with, of course, it depends on your term, how long your term is, how many years, and so on. So, before we lock ourselves into anything further to do with the RBC loan, at least ask, and Paul, I believe I asked this of you before, to check with, that it was a woman who spoke, she was the financial person at the regional district meeting, to ask her, because she gave some examples of the kinds of financing, because she was referencing that when we said we have to go over the treatment plan. She said, "Just be careful, you look at your financing." And my understanding was that it not be too, that you don't lock yourself in too long term, so you can take advantage if we convert, if the landowners decide that we convert, that then it can be rolled over. So, we don't want to shut that door inadvertently without checking it out. So, I'm asking that that question be asked of the person in the regional district who spoke to us.
Okay, so after, I know I'm supposed to be cheering, but I'll just try to answer this. After you left the meeting, the CVRD, she, they talked a little bit about a rate that they got last year on the hospital. And like, when I talked to the Royal Bank, I asked them what his rate was for the, for a ten-year term that they took, and it was actually very close to their municipal financing rate. So, it wasn't, it was very, it wasn't a big difference, 30 basis points. So, the rate that we're being provided is quite good, but it's my thought that really, I'm just throwing it out there so people know that we haven't decided right now what rate we will take or what term. We will, my thinking is that coming March, we will talk to the CVRD and say, "Hey, if you're going to borrow this amount of money at these terms, what we would give, we would talk to the Royal Bank and say, 'This is what we do give,' and then we can look at where the feeling is." Because if we, you know, like I said, if we're getting a really good rate, Trustee Bitten said, maybe it's a good option to take advantage of that rate, and, you know, if there is a conversion, then the rate will be in effect, and it will not be, it will be a very good rate. It is, like, I compare it with the Royal Bank first with that. You know, I know, I did some checking around first, and it is a fantastic rate he was offering us.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying we don't want to pull...
No, we are not. It will be next March, when this hopefully will come up, from beginning there to the end, and we can look at the option from there.
Questions pertaining to that in regards to the loan. I mean, currently, we don't have to make a decision until we finish the water treatment plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so at that point, we can actually look what the rates are?
Yeah.
And then look at the options. Now, my understanding is if you have an open-ended mortgage, it costs a lot more than a closed mortgage.
It does.
So, we have to balance that one out, let's say, March, April, or whenever the treatment plan is done, and we're looking at it, is if we grow with an open-ended loan and extend that for a long enough period, we're paying a whole lot more interest. Or an open-ended mortgage, if you say.
The only reason we would have taken an open-ended loan is if we knew we had a sizable sum of money coming that we would want to pay it down by. We also have the ability to have a split loan, so we can take part of it as a fixed rate, and we can take part of it as an open mortgage, a very mortgage.
A very spread, yeah.
Yeah.
I was told, when I asked, that there was already, that there was already money drawn on...
That is incorrect. I had the wrong information.
Okay, good. Okay, so there's no money drawn on it?
I checked on Tuesday, and there's no money drawn.
Okay. Because it shouldn't be, because we have enough.
Just one more question, Paul.
Yes.
On the financing. So, if I was building a house and I was taking these drawdowns or something, isn't it normal? You can have an open-ended mortgage, or at some point, you could lock it in? Like, I'm just wondering if the interest rate does start to show some kind of a increase or something. Can we not lock in? I think it's like 120 days ahead of time, or...
It keeps changing. Sometimes, and they used to be, the banks used to be more generous for that, now it's getting to be lesser and lesser the time they allow for it. So, normally, sometimes 30 days to go back or 60 days. So, we'll keep an eye on the bond rate and see what's happening, and we can always make an inquiry to Robert, our person. But it's really nice with the conversation with him that he, yeah, he spoke very high about financing and our package we pushed forward to him. So, it was great that he had that level of confidence in us and that to give us the rates that he did. So, yeah. The loan is actually for 3.5 million that we have set up right now, and the rest will be coming from the money that we have in our, in our account, from the working period of years boards and building of our funds, that we have money to start this process. Okay, any other questions on Royal Bank? Let's just move to the approval of the capital expenditures of 6, 8, 9, 7 to replace the fire department computers app for attached quote. The original quoting there from ACS Computers. And maybe I will get our fire department committee chair, Trustee Danenburgh, to speak on that.
Okay, this might have been brought up recently, but it's actually been brought up many a time, and I dealt with the computer systems, the portal for the fire department. We're running very non-turn, piece of equipment, and a lot of the stuff is no longer tax-supported, which means if we have a problem, we can't recover from it. So, they're looking at, remember, there was a piece addressed by the chief on that. Yeah, and it turns out, I mean, they have multiple towers and they have laptops, so the trucks have laptops in them, we have the towers at the office, and they're all statined with replacement, and the quotes are from ACS. It's broken down to items in terms of all the packages they need and a total price, which was with taxes in, 68, 97, 27.
Okay. So, I'm realized, I understand this money is in the budget, so, but it says here in the minutes that we do need, there is a, my law, the minutes to one side, approval of capital expenditures to replace the fire department computer app for a quote. So, do we want to put a motion forward for that, for that exact clause?
Just some discussion.
Okay, sorry.
If I can. Yeah, so when I was fire department...
Point of order, the motion is actually made first and then discussing...
No, this isn't about the motion.
We're having a discussion. Go ahead.
So, spent a bit of time in Cumberland Fire Department. I think they're probably the leaders on Vancouver Island on a volunteer fire department, from what I can understand. But one thing that Mike, fire chief, showed us is the amount of documentation required now for WCB coverage for firemen, and every duty, every training process that somebody takes has to be documented and recorded, and I think it's critical that we have computers that are capable of doing this to make sure that our firemen are properly covered. I think it, probably from the sounds of it right now, maybe this information isn't being captured properly, so it looks like it would be an asset to do that.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, so, do we get a moment, can we get a, so basically, will the motion be the what's said here in number five for freedom?
Correct, yeah. I would say the motion is being drawn.
Okay. Good. All those in favor?
I second that.
You said, I'm sorry?
Okay.
All right, fine. And, okay, all those in favor? Okay. And I probably photocopied more than I needed to, but I basically...
No, I'm glad you did. You photocopied the whole act.
Well, the act would be by accident.
Yeah.
So, for those who would admit, we'll have it as part of your repertoire.
Could save us a lawsuit.
Okay.
Thanks for doing that.
No problem. Okay, so this has came, this came forward from the last meeting, and basically, who would like to start?
Okay, well, it was my agenda item, and the reason I put it as an agenda item was because, as the minister has alluded to, we have not done a great job of following the freedom of information and protection of privacy. And I happen to have a lot of experience in it, having worked for thirty years, and still, I am a regulated... And still, I am a regulated, I'm a regulated professional in two professions. And I have to follow and understand freedom of information. So, and that's part of why the ministry is so upset with us around not being transparent and accountable. So the four pages that are applicable, so we have, we are supposed to appoint a FIFA officer, Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Officer. That's the person who deals with freedom of information requests. When the public asks for information requests, then that person releases it. Now, we have two years' worth of committee of the whole, quote, executive meetings where they were all held secretly without any minutes being released to the public. That's a violation. And furthermore, the items in those meetings were not, just as we discovered with the agenda today, items were put in camera when they were not properly meant to be in camera. So we are going to be inundated by requests, freedom of information requests. And as we learned from our parliamentarians, essentially, all information generated, produced by a local government body is public, all of it. We even heard from our trainers of emails. And that's something that was supposed to have been done. We're supposed to be getting Union Bay emails and not be using our private email.
On that point, I did have a chat this week and it's in process.
Okay, but that
I'm just, I'm just telling you that.
Thank you, no, I was going to ask about that. So that's all part of it, is that we have a duty. Everything that is produced using taxpayers' money, and that includes staff, is paid by taxpayers' money, is publicly available, with the minor exceptions. So the, the part that is applicable is item thirteen. So it's on page seven nineteen of your, of your handout, where you see policy advice and recommendations, item thirteen. So what you see there is item one, the head of a public body may refuse to disclose to an applicant information that would reveal advice or recommendations developed by or for a public body or a minister. Two, the head of the public body must not refuse to disclose, under the one I just read, and then a whole list of all the things that cannot be. And you'll see that all of our agenda items are listed on that list, which includes background material, public opinion polls, statistically, statistical survey, appraisal, economic forecasts, environmental impact statement. This seems to be out of order. Final report or audit of the performance or efficiency of a public body, consumer test or report, feasibility or technical study, including cost estimates. Like, it just goes on. Everything that has been produced must be made available to the public. The simplest way to save time for the staff is to just automatically, as we do with our minutes, post them online. That saves a huge amount of time and effort for staff having to address freedom of information requests. And that is all what the, what the officer should do. I'm asking for a new officer to be appointed because it is absolutely clear that our current administrator or whoever is doing this, including who wrote up the agenda, does not understand freedom of information. Puts things, the opposite of what should be in camera, isn't in camera, and what isn't in camera should not be in camera. So there seems to be a real disconnect. I know someone locally who can actually provide the training. And I'm going to suggest that because we have this monumental task of all two years' worth of committee of the whole meeting minutes, which must be released, we have a duty to release them. Even in-camera meeting minutes are supposed to be released when the issue is passed. So for example, Rick, when we were negotiating in-camera multiple times with the developer when we came up with our potable water agreement, those were all legitimately in-camera meetings because they were the negotiation of the potable water agreement. But that's over now. So those minutes should technically be released. The minute, the, the only way that you limit publishing something is if there is proof in what you are about to public, uh, publicize, that it is going to cause harm to the district. That's the key question. You can't publish anything that will cause harm, fiscal harm, financial harm, to the district. Well, you can see, none of those items that originally appeared on this agenda were going to be harmed to the district, like they don't even fit anywhere as properly in camera. So I'd like to show you on page, so you, as you can see, huge, huge, long list of things that they, then it says, then it goes on to describe disclosure harmful. So those are the things that you cannot disclose. Then you go to page, you go to page, I think, you go to page, forgive me, twenty-two, look for twenty-two.
We only have nineteen, twenty?
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. It's in a different, somehow written differently. So here's disclosure harmful to personal privacy. So that's the second part of, there's freedom of information and then there's protection of privacy. They go hand in hand. So just to go back to the question, just to go back to where it says on, under twenty-two, item four, sorry, flip the page, two pages, to four, where it says, in the middle selects page fifteen nineteen, in the middle, item four. A disclosure of personal information is not an unreasonable invasion of a third party's personal privacy if that person gave permission. If there's compelling evidence that that person's health or safety is at risk, blah, 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 all the way down to, all the way down to E. It is not an invasion of privacy if the information is about a third party's position, functions, remuneration as an officer, employee, or member of public body. And that goes back to the fire, all of us fit under that. If we were paid a salary, it would have to be disclosed. All of the staff fall under that, the fire people fall under that as well. So the, the rule of thumb is everything is public unless it is legal, land acquisition, or personal employee issues, like medical, disciplinary, where it would be considered an invasion of privacy to release.
And litigation.
Yeah, I said that, I said legal.
Land, labor.
Oh, and I forgot litigation, okay. And litigation. So we have someone in the office who's not doing this correctly. And this is a serious problem, as I've said before, landowners. There is an example of a landowner in March who asked for the water treatment, the potable water agreement, which is a public document, and was charged thirteen hundred dollars for producing it. That's, that was March of this year. That is unacceptable. And the landowners would have every right to get very angry and take us to court for that.
So do we have a motion on the floor?
So my motion is to receive training on the FIFA, on proper FIFA procedure, with the goal of, with the goal of reviewing
So for yourself to receive training?
For, for the board, no, I think the whole board should, and the staff. No, 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 I think the staff need to know how to do this.
So the board?
And the staff, any board member who wants to join, and the staff, it's really the staff.
And just fill it there.
No, I understand, I understand.
One and staff, you see.
Yeah, and I, I have a really good local person in mind who's not going to be too expensive. And we can actually use the COW meeting minutes as, so that we're not talking in the abstract, that we're actually getting work done. We can use the expertise that we've hired to help us sort through the COW meeting minutes that need to be posted. But we're doing it with an actual person who knows what they're doing. Do you get what I mean?
So the motion is board and staff to receive
Receive training in, in proper FIFA.
To receive FIFA training?
Yes.
Okay, do we, you meant a motion, do we have a seconded?
Why would you not do something legally that we're legally obligated to do?
Chair.
Are my
I'm just, I'm just I'll respond to that, if that's allowable.
Go ahead.
Okay, I've just been handed a stack of paper, nineteen to nineteen. I've not had a chance to review any of this.
And that, you can ask, Mr., you can ask the chair.
The chair, I'm done.
Okay. This is new to me. I understand some of the stuff involved. I'm curious, how many outstanding things, okay, let's forget about the committee of the whole meetings for a second. Those minutes can be posted. In fact, I went through a bunch of numbers, but they're posted. Committee of the whole meetings were not executive meetings, it's a separate issue.
I'm talking about the executive.
Pardon?
I'm talking about the executive.
That's not
The ones that are technically not supposed to be in camera.
Okay.
That's not what I was saying.
You confuse me with, you switch back and forth on that.
Because the executive was a terminology used by the previous board to mask a COW meeting
Okay, I get it.
And make it in camera, so.
So if all those issues dealing with executive meetings that don't exist, if those minutes come out, what other outstanding things do we currently have that falls under freedom of information? The only one I'm familiar with in the last while was the water infrastructure agreement, which is now publicly available.
We have two years' worth of executive meaning minutes.
I recognize that. It's just a question of posting them now.
No, it's not, because they do need to be reviewed under proper freedom of information regulations. It's not just a question of posting them, because there is very little, like one percent, that is actually
So are we some of those very familiar?
And that's the job of the staff, who is clearly not familiar, but needs the training. So you're going to deny them the training. So Paul, could you explain why it took so long for this information, which, which, which Hein has said is, it is
I'll second the motion.
Sorry?
I'll second the motion, second discussion.
So, Paul, I'm still
Second discussion, the motion's been seconded.
I am talking to Paul, I beg your pardon, Chair Healy, I beg your pardon. Hein had a question, why he did only receive this just now.
Okay, I, I will explain it, very simple. He was sent an email, he sent in July, and at that time, it just started, and there was a lot of information coming at me, and I missed that part. When I, when we put together the agenda, four items, I picked up that the FIFA officer was on it, but I did not see the little, the, the rest of it, that each person was to receive a copy of this. You made it, where we had a discussion yesterday, you pointed out to me that I missed this. I went back, looked it up, and I went, you got it done today.
So it's
So it was a human error.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, fine.
Okay.
I second the motion, I think it's a wise idea for the staff. I don't know about the trustees, I, I'm just a little hesitant to second the motion. First off, not understanding totally if, how long is the training? Is it a four-hour session, a six-hour session, four days? I, I'm not really for myself, I don't, but the staff probably needs the extensive training. But that's the hesitancy of me making this motion.
Okay, so
There might be a separation between the staff and what the trustees need.
The motion's been, then it's been seconded, so discussion, trustee culture, do you have any idea how long this training would be?
It could, it's not, it's not onerous. It would be less than a day, for sure. My proposal was, rather than talking about abstract things, I personally learn better when I actually have examples to go through. And that's why I brought up the two years' worth of COW adminis
Executive.
Sorry, see, that's what's confusing, it should never, never, it's, it's the ones that they called in camera, which never should have been in camera. Now, I want to qualify that. There may be one or two items out of the two years that legitimately do fall and still fall in camera. That's why I'm just saying, you can't just blanketly post them. We actually have to have a process that we go through to do them. I also want to know, Paul, Chair Healy, forgive me, I've asked this question several times, not gotten an answer. Ballpark, what did the training cost for our parliamentary guys? That was hugely expensive.
It's not on the agenda, Mr. Chair.
I'm asking in relation to
That's not on the agenda.
Is that on the agenda?
That does not need to be on the agenda.
Yes, it does.
No, it does not.
I will, I will, no, 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 hold on, wait, let's, let's carry on with it, let's carry on.
Sorry.
No, hold on. Let's carry on with this, this item, and at the end of discussing this item, I will allow it to be added. Okay, I'll give you the answer, but let's just carry on with this item. Okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the board for board and staff to receive FIFA training. And the motion was made by Susanna and Rick seconded. Is there any other?
And that would be less than a day, like half a day, half a day.
So part of my discussion on this is that, I guess maybe the motion is very cut and dry that we're going to do it. I think it's more of, should we be looking at what is required for the trustees versus what is required for the staff? I don't know if we require the same training or not.
The same training.
That's my only hesitation on it, I'm not going to amend the motion, so we'll just hold on.
So maybe we'll get
Okay. Discussion?
I would like to amend the motion because, one, I do not believe that the trustees' position do with this. This is an officer of the board, someone who reports to the trustees.
I put up my hand, I didn't see anything.
He's filthy, go ahead.
I understand, I'm doing it so that he will see me.
Okay, I saw it.
The inherent deal of having a foo-foo-foo-foo, whatever it's called, officer, I have no problem with that. However, I do not believe the board should be included in this. That officer should report to the board, and ultimately, a decision might have to be made by the board. So it's only recommendations to the board, ultimately, we have to make a decision, I, I understand this. I don't think we should be part of the process. Not blunt with this here as a lawyer, some of the items that are contentious deal with, I mean, I'm just basically going through this. This is actually, you'd need a lawyer to sort some of this stuff out. I'm hesitant that four hours of training would qualify anybody to become an officer. I mean, we've had three hours of the training in terms of proper procedures during the parliamentary things. I still know nothing. So my concept is, I'd like to know a lot more about the role of a full-fledged officer. I'm having trouble pronouncing that, freedom of information person, how does that?
Thank you.
And what's actually required and what responsibilities from a legal perspective they own up to.
Okay.
Well, I can answer the question, it says right in the improvement district manual, that the head, it's not an officer. The person in charge of the freedom of information can be a staff or a trustee. It's not a big fancy oath, you know.
Put me on what page you're on.
Yeah.
Where it says
She's in, she's not in
I'm in the improvement district manual, so, yeah, it doesn't have to be, the word officer is not
Which page are you on?
I, I'm trying to find it, I will find it.
The number's on the bottom. The number's on the bottom.
Anyway, I will get that to you. It'll be actually in this big document, that we were just given. So, so we are ultimately we are ultimately responsible as trustees for what is released, so I think the training is not so that we do the job, the training is so that we understand the job, so that we can look at it and go, yeah, that was done correctly, or that was not, because ultimately, the board is responsible. That's all. Nobody has to, the trustees do not have to attend the training, but they could if they wish to be informed. The purpose of this act is to make public bodies more accountable to the public. That's the purpose of it all. So, it seems to me there's some on the board who do not want to make things accountable to the public.
I think that's a very serious accusation. I don't think we should be saying that at public meetings.
I, I'm expressing, I'm expressing...
Do you have a specific name?
Yeah, it's based on how we've seen today.
What name do you want to say that will really...
There seems to be an objection to doing things.
Either say a name or stop talking.
There seems to be an objection to doing things in a way that makes public bodies more accountable. That's all, what I'm observing. By not even making a motion about training for staff. Seems crazy to me.
Perhaps if you could, you don't quite understand your motion, how it's worded.
The motion is training for staff.
Okay, and we have scant information other than the handbook here. You relate it to the fact that it's in our 2012 Improvement District Trustee Handbook. I read through it, I found nothing in there pertaining to it.
Well, it is there, it says all information, it says...
You've also mentioned that the ministry has required us...
It actually does say there, all information is public.
You've also mentioned that the ministry has required us within two years to do this, you have a document on that one. That was one of your opening points. The ministry requires us to have a free of information and to have it done within two years. That is an opening statement.
I never said that. I did not say that.
Well, that's what I...
Are you speaking again?
I did not say that.
Don't speak.
You said the ministry.
Uh, Trustee Bitten, stop pointing your finger at me.
I'll tell you what, we're running this meeting...
We were having a break. The chair left.
Well, you were still talking, see, the meeting wasn't adjourned.
No.
And that's why we can't have public meetings, is because of the interaction of the crowd.
The break was happening.
Okay, so where are we at? We have the motion at the board, we have a second, we're in discussion.
Would you read the motion, please?
Board and staff to receive FIFA training. F O I P P A training. That's the motion, as it sits.
The board does not have to receive training, but it's optional, I personally think it's important.
It is suggested, or it is suggest, I don't know, I want to say...
I think the motion should be amended, so that people will vote on it, so I would amend the motion to suggest that the trustees, um, consider, um...
Wait one second? When you have to mostly get away from the media, suggest?
I should have wrote it out, but just...
That's okay, suggest.
Worded in such a way that the trustees, uh, it's suggested that the trustees take a minimal amount of, um, freedom of information training, and that the staff is required to take the training as required in their position.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
Yeah, so it's seconded, does an amended motion, Hein has seconded it.
Minimal training? Or basic training?
Basic training, yeah, that's better.
Basic training? And, and staff receive training...
According to their position on requirements.
And staff receive the training required, the required training. Doesn't work?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. And that was pushed forward by, okay, so there was a previous motion on the board, so...
It's been amended, so it's just...
So this is amended, so now this one is being amended? Are you okay with the amended motion? Did you mean the first one? The amended motion would be, suggest that the, that the trustee take the basic training, and the staff do the, take the required training for FIFA. Okay, and the staff, okay, so that is the motion. Uh, and, okay, so I think we had a discussion, all those in favor? Carry it. Okay. Okay, so I'll write that down. Okay, I will come back to you, I know it's not on the agenda, but it's, I know it's been asked.
Thank you. Several times.
Okay, like I said, it's been asked. We did have consultants come in to help us in to base after the April 23 meeting, and to get the AGM going, and to do some training, and to listen to the concerns of what's happening, that was done by the previous board, and also suggested by the government, that we bring in the necessary trustees. There's two components of their billing. The first was the just coming here to this room with us, back in, or this area, back in April, and sitting, sitting down and listening to our concerns, looking at everything, going through our bylaws, et cetera, et cetera. And that portion of all the initial work, meeting here, coming to all the meetings, worked out to be a bill of approximately $12,000. The second portion was, they came here and spent a day, plus they had to do a lot of work in getting, and again, reading through our minutes, looking at agendas to give us, every year, the board does training for the new members, this year we had, and for the returning members, this year we have two people that were brand-new, and as you can see, were still learning. And that training was $3,800. So those are the two numbers, a little bit over $12,000 for one, and $30,000 for the second portion. Okay?
Okay, so $16,000. I can guarantee you that the FIFA training will be less than $16,000. By far.
By far.
By far.
Okay. Okay, and the last agenda on our public portion is Review 1B01.
We didn't actually, oh, okay. Sorry. Sorry.
Yep, I think I'm moving through here. Trustee...
I am four, maybe I haven't touched that one.
Uh, we're coming, can we go to that in camera?
Okay.
And then, once we get a result, it will come out of camera.
Okay.
So? Well, I'm the policy?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Who would like to start? You brought, Tegi, Trustee Bitten, uh, Benner.
Okay, Responsible of the Board, Chair and Trustees, 1B01. Role of the Chair, point number three. Act as key spokesperson for UVID to the media, the community, and other stakeholders. As far as I'm concerned, we have a bit of a problem with that. We received a letter Friday of a long weekend, and a trustee posted the information on a personal blog, on a Sunday. We had no chance to even discuss the letter as a board, and I believe the posting of that should have been done through the chair on the UVID website. And landowners' updates. We went through this once already, and that was the Gary Mason, and we had our our afternoon deals dealing with meeting procedures and basic rules of order. And bottom line, UVID Code of Conduct policy at the bottom. Not make public statements without the authorization of the board chair. So, we definitely have a problem with 1BO1, we're not following. Uh, if a, if a policy is not strong enough, perhaps we need to craft a bylaw pertaining to that very area. So I think it undermines the role of the chair, it undermines the board, and it gives a very bad public projection. This is going to be released regardless. It should be up to the board, through the chair, to do it. Not on the internet.
I'd like to speak on that.
Okay, go ahead.
So, again, we spent a lot of money, as we just heard, on our training. Um, we did discuss this, as Hein said, very thoroughly on how this was to evolve. Actually, we discussed about trustees having blogs. We discussed very thoroughly about when a trustee takes an oath to the ratepayers here, um, that they follow the Code of Conduct thoroughly. So, we discussed at great length how the chair was responsible for all information released from Union Bay Improvement District. And I believe that's, that's one of our biggest downfalls in the past, where information and some misinformation was coming from all different sources, and it started all over again. And, you know, again, um, you know, it seemed like the previous board was the problem, but I, I'm beginning to think that that's not the problem. Um, the problem is somebody not following the Code of Conduct and not following their oath. So, um, again, back to Hein's point, it's undermining the whole process, the whole process of accountability that we keep hearing about all the time, how we are accountable, it seems like somebody thinks that they're not accountable to the Code of Conduct and the oath of office that they've taken to the ratepayers of Union Bay. So, I think that's my point, the second part of this is, what happens when this happens again? Because it's, it's going to happen again, and it seems like our training, that we spent a huge amount of money on, has had absolutely no effect. So, I would like to hear from the chair, what, what action is going to be taken if this does happen again?
Excuse me, we're still in discussion.
No, okay, he had...
Excuse me?
No, hold on, there's a question. I will have to take that under advisement, I will have to get back to you. Yep, I will take it under advisement and see what we can comment, like I said, we'll have to look into it.
Yeah, I think it should be done in a public forum, as it's being done right here.
Why is the discussion not being able to...
No, I answered his question, and now I will come to you.
You just interjected again.
Okay, okay. Trust...
But I will, of course, let Trustee Harrelson speak, if he wishes to speak first.
No, I'm just looking at procedure. When it comes to procedure, and it comes to information going out regarding, uh, what's happened in the community and announcements, that should be coming out through the chair. It's, it's very simple, it comes out, it goes out to the public, through the chair, through the website, and mailouts, whatever, after it's been okay by the chair. Period, it's, it's very simple, it's straightforward. You know, blogs and all these other things are wonderful things, but at the same time, they can be contentious, they can be inaccurate, they can be a lot of things that we don't need. The thing is, freedom of information is one thing, but when it comes to information coming in to the board, to the chair, CEO, et cetera, there is a process. And all we have to do is follow that process, and things should work. When it gets off track, then all of a sudden, it's not working properly. And if misinformation goes out, it's very hard to turn around and straighten that out. And that's really all I've got to say.
Okay, may I speak now?
You may.
Thank you. So, first of all, I am following the Code of Conduct very carefully. Um, I contacted the chair on the day that we received the letter, and I let him know that it needed to be posted immediately. I waited two days before I posted it, hoping it would show up on the website, it did not.
It was Saturday that you called, go ahead.
That's fine, please let me finish, uninterrupted, thank you. So, um, uh, it does not require approval or a vote, this is what I mean about a lack of understanding of freedom of information. Every letter comes from the ministry is automatically something that should be posted. No questions about it, because it was produced by public money. So, you know, and furthermore, I had direct personal experience with a letter from the government sent out to us warning us about our bad behavior, way, two years ago, and that took two months with this board to get it posted online. I was not going to, I was not going to let that happen again, so I, I take full responsibility for posting it. Full responsibility. And it's not my preferred way of doing it, the preferred way would have been instantly, that morning, it be posted. So, secondly, um, I posted, and again, I contacted Chair Healy, and I told him that the in-camera items were incorrectly put in camera, and that I was going to post, and I did the agenda items. And I don't want to do it that way. That's why I've asked for the freedom of information training, and I asked for it way back in June.
So, we're talking about, yeah, okay.
It's not off-subject, it's an issue, no, it is the issue of information being posted. And secondly, and finally, I do not speak for Union Bay, and our trainer said that very clearly, that blog, a person can say whatever they want on the blog, yes, he said that very, very clearly. The Code of Conduct does not, and first of all, Code of Conduct is a policy, it is not enforceable, it's a guideline, and I did not speak for the Union Bay board, I made that very clear, my entire blog is my personal opinion. Furthermore, the letter from the minister was addressed to me, as a trustee. It now becomes my information, which I can do with as I wish, but I want to make it clear, it is not my goal to undermine the board. I deeply do not want to do it that way, I've had enough of three years of doing it that way. I expect a board to follow the rules and to do things according to our policy. And so far, I think we've muddled through quite well. And, you know, I will, I don't want to do it this way, but I will continue to unless, until Union Bay starts to do things properly, that is what I will do.
I have more to add to that.
Training.
Okay, so, again, in our training...
And I must apologize, I, I do have, I do have another meeting to attend to, so I am going to have to adjourn early.
So you're not going to hear of what I have to say about your behavior then?
I'm sure I'll hear about it in some other fashion in the minutes.
Anyway, the chair has made very clear that when we took our oath as a trustee, that we relinquished our rights as a landowner, I believe you will all agree with that, because I asked that question directly. So, um, again, Trustee Keltzer, taking on the fact that a letter was addressed to the chair of the board and says that it's her information, well, certainly, it belongs to everybody, there is a process in here, we have a Code of Conduct, we have taken an oath, and I find it so unbelievable that we're constantly talked to about accountability when there's no accountability on somebody that's taken an oath. So, what do you... How do we address it? I suggest, Trustee Keltzer, get no information until it's naturally, no information until it's actually cleared by the chair. None of us should get any information, I guess, because of the way she's acting. And, um, it's released by the chair, and then we'll all get it at that same time.